All right, everyone. Good evening. The time is now seven thirty P M. This is the October thirteenth, twenty twenty-two work session of the Allenville Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who's joining us in the audience. And on the Zoom webinar. At this time, I ask everyone to please mute your devices so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There'll be one opportunity during this meeting for public comment, and we will advise you at the appropriate time. Linda, please read the Open Public Meetings Act announcement.
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meeting, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the Borough website, published in the record within the first ten days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the October fifth, two thousand twenty-two sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and Borough website.
Great, thank you. Please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Holman here. Councilwoman Lovasolo here. Councilman O'Connell.
Here.
Councilman O'Toole.
Here.
Councilman Sasso.
Here.
Councilwoman Wozinski.
Here.
Mayor Bernstein.
Here. Thank you. Public comment. This is the first of three opportunities tonight for the public present to comment. Anyone from the public wishing to speak, please come to the microphone at the podium, state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to address the governing body. And Mark, as I said, I'm not sure whether you're here for something on the agenda or not, but now would be an appropriate time if you want to come now.
Twenty-two Greenland place. I had given something to Amy and passed the one, at least partially, to the other council members in regard to a request to have an EPS styrofoam collection in the borough. And I did have a conversation with Suzanne about this, and her concern was whether it was going to be any cost to the borough, and I assured her that it would not. This is run entirely by Bergen Hub volunteers from Sustainable Jersey. In the, in the past, we have usually rented a truck, a twenty-foot box truck, and filled it up with the material that the residents bring. I'm hopeful. We have a meeting coming up with Tracy Zuer, and they are going to be providing us funds to purchase the densifier that I've been chasing for two and a half years. So fingers crossed, my request is that we have it by the holidays, so that post-holiday collection would be possible. And the date that I was hoping was January seventh.
What, what day of the week is that? Saturday?
That is a Saturday. Unfortunately, the Saturday between Christmas and New Year's is New Year's Eve, so that wouldn't work.
And what hours?
Nine to one. And typically, what we've done in the past is the first hour is strictly for residents of the borough where it's being hosted, or the municipality, I should say. And then after that, residents from anywhere in Bergen County can bring material. So what I would be requesting is a location, and I thought perhaps a very well parking lot, or if we could use the site, proposed construction site, if that's a possibility. It's a big open lot.
Oh, a black?
Yeah.
Yeah, it might probably not. We probably will be demoing that soon.
So, but for here, where we've done it, where we did
Yes.
the recycling day, I mean, it was wonderful the way it
Yes, there's a good entrance and then a circle.
Yeah, I mean Crestwood Lake is also an opportunity, but I think it's probably better visibility here.
Yes, yeah, if it's on the main street.
Okay, so yeah, I'd be in favor of doing it here, and I think for those of us who won't be made, but for yeah, I would say proximity to here would be better.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I agree. I was just gonna ask, is the machine or the truck or whatever, how big is it, and would cars be able to move around it?
Oh, yes. The densifier fits inside a small trailer that's similar to a landscaper's trailer. It's no larger than that.
Okay.
So then if it were, if we don't have the densifier, then it would just be packed into a truck, loose material, and I would take it to a site in Haskell.
How many people are involved in, in the process?
There's usually between ten to fifteen volunteers, and they come from, you know, through the Bergen Hub. We also ask for volunteers, anybody in the borough that would be willing to help us out, that would be great. But it's never been an issue to have volunteers and, and process the materials.
Okay. Chief, when, when we did the, the recycling day, I mean, you were out there. I know we had other members of the police department. Do you have any input as to when, where, and, you know, how to do it?
I, I would just suggest that we put the operation as further as far, or most in the parking lot as possible.
Yeah, we would locate it behind the building. And what we've done in the past, I've volunteered at several of the events, we set up cones so that we can direct the traffic very easily. And everybody's cooperative. During COVID, we were doing it without having anybody get out of their vehicle at all. It's a well-run operation. We're all very well-versed in making sure that the operation goes smoothly. Everything is, you know, packed up and gone, no mess, yeah.
The question is, Ron, are comfortable with no Borough employee, I mean, other than probably the police traipsing through every now and again, just to make sure everything's okay? Comfort level on that, that the operation? And then, Mark, you know, whether in the past, I guess, the recycling that was done, was there a separate certificate of insurance, or was there a look to see if it was covered by the Borough policy?
I, I don't know the answer to that. I can find out as quickly as, as possible, and let you know.
Right. Wouldn't we want, I mean, I guess as a fallback, but we would want a certificate of insurance over the first claim if something happens there?
Yeah, I think we would. You just find out at both ends, you know, whether our insurance wants us to be secondary to a certificate of insurance from the sponsor of the event. Because I'm assuming that ultimately we'll want to adopt the resolution approving this. We may need to fill in some of the details you're giving tonight, you know, in terms of the actual date and
Yes.
you know, a little bit of, you know, stuff I could put in a resolution, but then I think we should find out when they run these events in other places in the past, how to handle the insurance.
Okay.
We could advise our insurer of that, and we can figure out where to go.
Okay.
Right. Well, we have time, so we're in good shape for that.
Okay, thank you. And Ron, I just wanted to ask a quick question in reference to the purchase of this unit that's pending about any type of equipment that is owned by the county and shared amongst municipalities, if you could. It doesn't have to be now, but if we could talk about that possibility. What's that? Well, if the county is the ultimate purchaser of this unit, we haven't figured out how it's going to, the money is there, but we haven't figured out how we're going to buy it yet. That's what we want to have. Okay.
Shared services.
So, I mean, now, but if you could help me out with how to present that, you know, as a possibility, with an example, I'd want to go there with an example to say, we know this is being done. So, you know, we'd like to do this with this piece of equipment as well. Okay, great. All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Mark, thank you so much.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Anyone else in the public wish to be heard? Not seeing anyone. Administration, Agenda Review, eleven resolutions on the consent agenda. Anyone have any questions? Matt, you heard, you can be in your costume, traipsing around until nine o'clock.
Thanks for the extra hour. The kids of Allenville, thank you.
Okay, let's do some council reports. Councilman O'Connell?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. For TPW, has been preparing for the two thousand twenty-two municipal, or the auction, I should say, and the municipal paving is done. The downtown streetscape project is progressing nicely, and patching holes is ongoing, and they've already used six tons of asphalt. And that's about it.
Great, thank you very much. Councilman Sasso?
Thank you. I guess the best news we had recently is from the park track and facility side is we got the seventy-five thousand, right, Ron? Is that correct?
Well, we got, we got reimbursed.
We got reimbursed, yeah.
Phase two of the playground.
Yeah.
Phase three, the twenty-twenty grant, which we put on the paper, that we want.
Refurbished the ground.
Yeah.
From the trails.
Somebody like this, we'll put that in next, we'll get reimbursed with twenty-twenty stuff, and we started getting some ideas to twenty-twenty one.
Right. So for those who are reading and listening to this or viewing it, what we're talking about is seventy-five thousand of free money, basically, to help Crestwood in the playground and nothing else to like. So.
Playground looks so good. I love seeing the kids have really We've been very successful with the Bergen County grants in, in Crestwood especially, and the ball fields. So they've been very good with our recreation department.
Yeah. So, so that was good. Then on a separate note, Councilwoman, Council President Wozinski, and I already talked about this, but I read in the paper about something that's happening in Ramsey where the residents are adopting a drain, and basically what that means is that you sign up, you know, it's nothing too formal or official, and you, you take care of the storm drain that's in front of your house or two doors down, which I've been doing for years. I didn't know it was a thing in Ramsey, but when I'm out there with my leaf blower blowing off my driveway, I blow it off for that, the flat part of the drain, because I'm only helping myself from the cul-de-sac flooding, you know, like on a night like tonight. So I contacted Ramsey, they gave me some other contacts, talked about how it works and, you know, and all that. So we're just floating the idea. It might be a nice idea in Allenville to do that.
Yeah, we've always asked our residents to clean up their storm drain.
I was just gonna say. Even if we don't do anything, like adopt a drain, you should, you know, when you're out there. And, and we use a lot of landscapers in Allenville, so it might not be a bad idea to ask the landscaper, hey, when you do my fall cleanup or spring cleanup, can you? I mean, it won't take you more than two more seconds to clean out the drain, so the water doesn't back up. So that was that. And getting back to Crestwood for a minute, you know, we had the Peace Pole project, right? Eagle Scout Porus raised money and he put up this, these peace poles down at Crestwood. It's a nice place to go meditate, reflect, you know, I've, I've been down there a few times. It's nice. We had the ground, not the groundbreaking, but the
Ribbon cutting.
Ribbon cutting, thank you for that down there. And anyway, he raised a good deal of money, and when he was all done, he had a balance left over, and the idea is that the balance goes back to the sponsor. The sponsor would be the Borough of Allenville. So symbiotically, I hold the check because I left a real check at home, but I hold a check for three hundred and fifty dollars made out to the Borough of Allenville.
Did you tell them to put it in the Crestwood fund?
I haven't.
Don't give it to Lisa. Don't give it to Lisa. Tell her to put it in the Crestwood fund.
I will.
So it goes back to Crestwood.
When I remember to bring it tomorrow, I will. So three hundred and fifty dollars back, back to the borough.
That's awesome.
On that project. So talk about, talk about a win-win there, right?
Yeah, that's awesome.
And that's all I have.
Great, thank you so much. Councilwoman Holman?
Hi, yes. Well, let's see. I'll first talk about water from my side of, before I hand it over to Ray. But the BPU did provide its approval on September the twenty-eighth, which is awesome. So now what's left really is engineering and easements and things like that that we have to finish up, as well as some of the legal operations. So it's, it's a wonderful step forward for the water sale, and hopefully we will be able to close, would you agree, November-ish?
Yeah, the, the contract right now has a forty-five day provision, so you're correct, referencing September twenty-eighth. The clock basically says we're supposed to close forty-five days after that.
So that'll be a fun bit. And so thank you to Ray, as well as to Mike Freeland and Ron, who've been working together really to get those steps going forward, because there's certainly not much that I can really be doing there. The phase one water restrictions are back, so we've been able to move back from phase two to phase one, which just as a reminder for anybody that might be listening, that even house numbers can water on Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, and odd house numbers on Wednesday, Friday, Sunday. It's always like that, and the Monday is a recharge day, so no water is permitted, but people can now
Finally, my glass.
Yes, they can car wash their house, even clean their driveways if that's what they need to be doing. So I know people had emailed me during this time, and I'm very grateful to the Allenville residents for being supportive during what was definitely a very dry time. And as far as the sewers, we are talking with both Ramsey and Saddle River, but with Saddle River, we are going to be looking, and I think we'll have to do a resolution, right? Yeah, we'll be, Saddle River will, and Allenville will be splitting the cost of lining a large stretch of piping, which will hopefully help with our I N I, which means basically taking on water from the outside, because we do have definitely a lot of water that's coming in and making our sewer numbers much higher than what ideally we would have them. So this will be a step in the right direction. And I think you'll, when you do your report, you'll give anything more.
Sure.
All right. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President Wozinski.
Sure. So the borough is still navigating through legal documents, but just for two twenty, we actually are meeting with the lawyers tomorrow, and hopefully we will get through the last few doc, documents. This is for two twenty, which is the front building. And once that closes, there will be seventy units that will be built, as well as the municipal community center in the front of the building. Last year, if you remember, we closed on two thirty. We received ten point two million for that. That paid down the acquisition debt. Two thirty now is operational. They are renters in there, and we are receiving revenue from the pilot, which is payment in lieu of taxes. So once we do close on two twenty, we're going to receive three million fifty thousand dollars for the acquisit, total acquisition, three oh five oh, three million fifty. I don't know how to say that. Fifty thousand. For the total acquisition clause of thirteen million two fifty. This money is going to be put towards, partially, the part of this money is going to be put towards the new community center. We also applied for a federal grant for the community center, and we did get semi-good news that it has made it through the first round. So if we get this grant, it'll be significant impact on the cost of the project. After we go through all this paperwork, after we go through the closing, then what we do is we go to bid, and we'll be going to bid, and we have to, by law, pick the lowest bidder, and then we will start our part of the building. This entire project, as I've been saying from the very beginning, has been acquired and will be built without any additional tax dollars. We also put in a grant, an H D S R F grant, for some of the work that we did with the remediation on two thirty. And that's, I think we put that grant in about two years ago, and it's finally come up. So I just have to, the resolution was actually on our council meeting this evening. So once I get all that paperwork together, I will submit that, and that'll be a nice little bump at the end of the year. I met with the X Y Z Club this month with Tyler. We actually had a really great time. We kind of opened it up and answered all their questions, so they were super happy to see us, and we're going to be starting our senior goody-bag program soon. And I'd like to congratulate Dave Baez as our new fire chief.
Yeah, I think I was going to mention, we went over the consent agenda, but you were, we didn't pinpoint that, but it is on the consent agenda. You're filling the balance of the term. Just as Amy said, we thank you for your willingness to serve and for all that you do for the Fire Department. Thank you.
That's it.
That's it.
Okay.
Still have my report. The, the Public Safety Committee met last week for our monthly meeting. Chief Bataro, they've, again, reiterated the need for members who are available to respond during the day, staffing the rig during the daytime hours has become somewhat of a challenge. Chief Dylan and I have had a couple of conversations about how we can best navigate that moving forward. Also present meeting was Assistant Fire Chief Baez regarding a few things happening in the Fire Department. With the departure of Chief Pollak, Dave is ascending to the chief's position from assistant chief. His appointment is part of the consent agenda this evening, and a big thank you to Dave for stepping up. The department's going through a little bit of a tumultuous time right now, and Dave's the right guy to lead the department through all this. So congratulations and thanks, Dave. Just over two weeks from Halloween, and also on the consent agenda is the curfew for this year. Based on Chief Dylan's recommendations, curfew will go into effect one hour later. That's the mayor's smart move.
I don't want to see you on my street on Sunday night at eight thirty, right?
So beginning at nine P M. I'm both goosey night or date night or cabbage night, whatever you want to call it, and Halloween night.
Missed you.
New school resource officer, the Met Great Reception, been handling minor calls for service within schools. Police station technology and facility upgrades are currently taking place. Our FEMA claim for tropical storm Ida is officially closed out, and most of the reimbursements have been received. And finally, the numbers. EMS calls to date, five hundred and ninety-two. Fire department calls, one hundred and ninety-six. And police department calls for service and record entries, twelve thousand eight hundred and forty-two. That's all.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Lovasolo?
Thank you. The Land Use Committee will be meeting next Wednesday morning, day of our Land Use Board meeting. So I'll have more to report at our next council meeting. Until then, I just want to thank Ron and Mike again, Freeland. There's a lot of things that come their way, and they've been, as Liz noted, very involved with this whole water closing. So their time is very much focused on that, and yet they still have to answer questions and take the concerns of our citizens, and you find a way to balance all that. So thank you for that. And also, John Gill, thank you. I think the Borough newsletter went out today. Thanks for always getting my stuff in there, and this time I'm putting on my Fell House hat, you know, for the barn sale on Saturday. So thank you for that. That's it.
Great, thank you. Liz, did you mention phase one?
I did.
Okay, great.
Tyler, I'm not going to, you want to speak about Fall Fest when it comes, comes down to you? Okay. So then the only thing left for me is fourth quarter taxes are due November first with the grace period to November tenth. Everything else I think was being covered by everyone else. We're returning Ray Whis.
Very short. As Councilwoman Holman mentioned, with the BPU approval on September twenty-eighth, the forty-five day clock is running most of the matters that the attorneys are involved in. I usually say we meet one or two times a week. We are now up to one or two a day. But most of the, the issues really involve easements, and we have an older system, so obviously on a historic basis, some of the utility easements are not of record, so the attorneys have to prepare those. There were other cases where the easement ran over, or the utility ran over Borough property, so there was no need for an easement, since we're both the utility and the property owner. Now that we're conveying the system, we have to create easements. So most of the attorney work is involving that or encroachments where maybe over a utility easement, somebody built the shed, hopefully not a pool, and we're trying to address, you know, those type of situations. With respect to two twenty, as Councilwoman Wozinski mentioned, particularly Tom Borger, my office has been working with, with Amy and Mayor Meredith Barra and our special counsel, because that's in a, again, a very formative stage after a little bit of quiet. It looks like everything is proceeding gangbusters on that. And yes, as Councilman Holman mentioned, the Ramsey and Saddle River sewer agreements. And I think one of our, our tasks is going to be to recreate these historic documents, which are not capable of being scanned or edited as such, but we'll get on the stick on that.
That's it. Thank you. Thank you so much. Linda, Municipal Clerk, anything you'd like to report?
Yes. Next week, October eighteenth, is the last day to register to vote for the general elections to be held on Tuesday, November eighth. The Municipal Clerk's Office in the municipal building here will be open until nine P M. on October eighteenth for the purpose of voter registration only. If you will not be around on Election Day, there are nine early voting locations available from October twenty-ninth through November sixth, Monday through Saturday from ten A M. to eight P M., and Sunday, ten A M. to six P M. If you have any questions regarding elections, please contact the Municipal Clerk's Office at the Borough Hall. Also, the Municipal Clerk's Office will have a booth at Fall Fest. We will have free COVID test kits, informational material, leaf bags. Chad, excuse, sorry.
Thanks so much. John, anything?
Work with Police Department on the website. I'll be there, banning the booth this Saturday, and the newsletter went out today. Hope everyone enjoys.
Great, thank you so much. Tyler?
We'll be finalizing our server migration after what seems like a long process, but happy to be wrapping that up tomorrow. Saturday is going to be a busy day in town, so in the morning it's going to be the holiday server poster painting at the Red Barn. Finally, that, at ten A M., we're going to have the Fell House barn sale. Then at one o'clock, West Allendale will be closing for the fastest two hours in Allendale for the fall. So that'll be running two to four, so we're excited about that. We have about thirty-five vendors signed up, so with the holiday poster painting being that morning, we're going to have a natural progression of families from the Red Barn to find their posters downtown. We're going to have, as I said, vendors, live music, pumpkin painting for the kids, and assorted vendors. Really looking forward to that, and then also Saturday evening is the Northern Highland marching band competition. While going on Saturday.
Thank you so much. Get it done. Ron? We don't believe that for a minute.
Yeah, nothing.
Great, thank you.
Thank you to Public Safety Committee, Mr. Kistner, Mr. West, for collaborating with me on police-related matters. Continuing my public outreach, participated in Walk to School Day yesterday. I'll have a booth at Fall Fest on Saturday, judging the P T L pumpkin carving contest on October twenty-third, and copy with a cop tentatively scheduled for November fourth. More details to follow.
Wonderful. Great. So that is all the reports and two minutes to spare, so I would request a motion to adjourn the work session.
So moves.
Second.
Second.
Thank you all in favor.
Great, we'll be back in two minutes. Thank you.
All right, everyone. The time is now eight o'clock, and this is the October thirteenth, twenty twenty-two regular session of the Allenville Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who's joining us tonight in person and via Zoom webinar. At this time, I ask the public present to please mute your devices so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There'll be two opportunities for those present to speak during this meeting, and we will advise you at the appropriate times. Linda, please read the Open Public Meetings Act announcement.
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meeting, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the Borough website, published in the record within the first ten days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the October fifth, two thousand twenty-two sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and Borough website.
Great. All these rise to join me.
The United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every justice and
Linda, please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Holman here. Councilwoman Lovasolo here. Councilman O'Connell.
Here.
Councilman O'Toole.
Here.
Councilman Sasso.
Here.
Councilwoman Wozinski.
Here.
Mayor Bernstein.
Here. Public comment. Open the floor to the public for agenda items only. Anyone who wishes to be heard, please come, state your name and address. Three minutes to speak. Not seeing anyone. Approval of the minutes. This is June sixteen, twenty twenty-two work, regular enclosed session meetings. Minutes. I would request a motion to approve the minutes of June sixteen, twenty twenty-two work session, June sixteen, twenty twenty-two regular session, and June sixteen, twenty twenty-two closed session.
So moved.
Thank you, Amy. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Suzanne. Linda, please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasolo?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
I don't feel bad about you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Sasso?
Yes, so?
Councilwoman Wozinski?
Yes.
Great. Next, approval of the minutes for June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two work and regular session. Request a motion to approve the minutes of the June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two work session, and June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two regular session.
So moved.
Thank you, Amy. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Suzanne. Linda, please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
I abstain. I was not at that meeting.
Councilwoman Lovasolo?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
I abstain.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wozinski?
Yes.
Next is the consent agenda. Request a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Matt. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Linda, please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasolo?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wozinski?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Any unfinished business? Any new business? We did our committee reports, staff reports, public comment. Anyone from the public wishes to be heard? Not seeing anyone. I would request a motion to adjourn the regular session.
So moved, Holman.
Thank you, Liz. Second? Thank you, Ed. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you very much, everyone.